Oh, yeah, you know. Did you not stop by the makeup room on your way?
It's on screen.
We're good. We are on screen.
We're on.
Alrighty. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the third meeting of the Water Rights Subcommittee of the New Market Town Council. We will begin tonight at 7:03 with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It has been some time since we have last been here, and I apologize for that. It's taken a bit of time, but we're all here tonight. I'm glad that we're able to do that. The second item that we had had on our agenda was to approve the public minutes from the August 15th meeting. I cannot seem to find that document, so assuming no, assuming no, she says my fellow town councilor is going to move that we postpone that until our next meeting for approval. Any objection? Nope. Awesome. Thank you. And we, with our prior meeting, that was for the folks who were in favor of adopting a rights-based ordinance in the town of New Market. We heard quite a bit of testimony, received more than a few documents speaking in favor to that. Tonight's meeting is going to be for those who are speaking against the adoption. We have here tonight the town administrator and the town attorney. What this means is while we are not necessarily accepting public comments in favor of adopting a rights-based ordinance tonight, we will acknowledge that there is at least one document, seven pages, sent in that will be made available to the public, will be presented to the town council along with our formal recommendation. There is one letter to the Subcommittee that I would like to read that we've agreed to read tonight as it clarifies a comment that was made at the previous meeting that we had on August 15th. If you give me just a moment, I can pull that up. That comment is from Rachel Lorenson. Dear all, I've been thinking about my comments during the public comments in this past Wednesday, referring to August 15th. I referred to a block party that I attended for residents of Bay Road and Durham Point Road, and I said everyone I met was against it. I'm afraid that you all may have interpreted "it" to mean the RBO. This is not the case. Everyone I met was against the pipeline that is being laid under the bay by Eversource. The reason I mentioned this is that I believe these residents would like to have had the option to fight this pipeline with a mechanism like an RBO, but instead they felt helpless to prevent something happening in their own backyard. I'm not sure I made this clear. I do not know anyone who would be against an RBO. Thank you, Rachel. I'm very sorry it took so long to get to that public comment. Without further ado, I would like to welcome the town administrator to begin.
Thank you. I want to start off by saying this has nothing to do with the content of the proposed RBO. We don't have any opinion on what the content is. We're discussing procedurally and legally what we can and cannot do. As you know, state of New Hampshire is not a home rule state. We are what they refer to as a Dillings Rule state, and which means that local government, as creatures of state, can only pass those laws which the state allows us to. The state currently does not allow us to pass rights-based ordinances. I read the letters and communications from you've had in the past, and it has referenced that other communities have adopted this. And while they may have adopted them, it doesn't mean it's legal. And that was the discussion that I presented to the town council. The right, people in traditional town meeting forms of government have the right to petition to place an article on the warrant. The select boards in those communities cannot deny placement of those articles on there. However, at the end of the day, even if it passes, it doesn't mean that enforcement happens. And that was the communication that I had of the council. For example, in my previous position in the town of North Hampton, the community had a petition for a motorcycle noise ordinance, and it was placed on the warrant. It was told to us by legal counsel that was not enforceable, and it was not legal because we did not have the right to adopt a motorcycle noise ordinance because the state of New Hampshire did not allow it. It passed town meeting. We were immediately sued by Seacoast Sally Davidson, and the courts upheld the legal opinion that we were not allowed to adopt that ordinance because we did not have the authority by the state of New Hampshire. I'm actually going to turn it over to the town attorney now to get more in depth on why, and let him explain.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is John Radigan from the Exeter Law Firm of Donahue, Tucker, and Shandella. Does the committee have a copy of my May 3rd?
Yes, we do.
Right. You know, what's interesting is that the source of some of these rights-based ordinances, which have come up probably in the last two or three years. We represent a lot of municipalities around New Hampshire, so this has come up in Peterborough, it's come up in Plymouth, both clients of mine. And the organization that's been advocating for these is called the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, and they're an organization from the state of Pennsylvania. I don't know whether Pennsylvania is a home rule state or not. Home rule meaning that when you have a home rule state, unless the legislature limits a municipality from doing a particular thing, the municipality is presumed to have the authority to do it. We're not a home rule state, so it's the converse. Unless the legislature has allowed New Hampshire municipalities to do things, you can't do them. But there are a number of home rule states in New Hampshire, excuse me, in the United States. Most of them tend to be in the Midwest, and Iowa is one, I think I referenced in my letter. And so, you know, we start with the understanding that you have, in order for a municipality to be able to legislate in an area, you have to be able to go to the state statutes or to the constitution and find the source of authority that lets you do that. And for the reasons that I've stated in my letter, it's quite clear that the subject matters that have been sought to be legislated in this ordinance simply are not subject matters that municipalities have the authority to regulate in the way in which they've suggested this could be done. The other problems that I've, you know, discussed in detail is that a lot of the terms that are used in this rights-based ordinance lack the type of specificity that the law requires in order to put people on notice as to what they're prohibited from doing. You know, you know, simple thing, if it says speed limit 50 in a zone and you're going over the speed limit, it's quite clear when the office testifies in court that you've been speeding, that you're on notice. If there's signposts along the road, that speed limit is 50. By the same token, a lot of the definitions, well, a lot of the words and terminology in this ordinance simply aren't defined, and the law requires terms and ordinances and regulations to be defined so people can understand what it is that they're being asked not to do or being asked to follow. So, so I think basically we have two sets of flaws. The first flaw with the ordinance is this municipality, like all municipalities in New Hampshire, don't have the authority to adopt something like this. And secondly, and when I say adopt it, they can adopt it, but it can't have any legal force, you know? So, you know, the voters could, just as the North Hampton example Steve just gave, the voters could adopt it, but it can have no legal force.
Counsel. Counsel adopts.
Well, yeah, yeah, the council could adopt it. And then the other, the other, the other issue is simply much of the ordinance lacks the type of clarity that is necessary to inform people about what it is that is being regulated by the ordinance. So if you have other questions about either my letter or anything that's been presented, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to respond to that.
Alright. Would either of you two like to begin?
I have a quick question about, specifically about the lack of specificity. And I guess my question is, would that, could that potentially open New Market? When it was explained to us, it was said that, one of the speakers from Seldef said that they could enforce this ordinance because I, because I asked. The town has explicitly said it, it would not be able to enforce the ordinance for the reasons that you just laid out. And they said, well, that's what we would do. Which I honestly find concerning that.
Did they say how?
Well, that they, I guess that they would use that as a, as a tool to speak to whatever, you know, company or organization that, you know, to say, here, we have this, you know?
Sure, I can address that. In the second page of my letter, in the second to last paragraph, I talk about how Section 1E is in enforceable, unenforceable, as there is no New Hampshire statute that authorizes municipalities to alter the principles of legal standing to sue tort liability and corporate liability. And so, this gets at the point that you were, you were addressing. In other words, you know, we, we often find this in, for instance, in the context of zoning, you know? Under the statutes, if you're in a butter, you can be a person aggrieved, you know, who has the right to appeal in action of the zoning board or of the planning board. But the fact that you live on the other side of town and are nowhere near the place where the planning board is reviewing the piece of land that's subject to the application, you don't have standing to sue because you can't be a person, a person aggrieved under the statute because you're not nearby or close enough so that you would be impacted by that. And by the same token, this is, this, this model ordinance was an ordinance that sought to create in favor of people and organizations an authority of standing to sue that simply doesn't exist under New Hampshire law. And it's the legislature, or it's the courts, that establish that. And it can't be the town of New Market on its own conferring standing to persons. And there's a lot of reasons why we do that. I mean, you could imagine how difficult it would be if someone was trying to do business in town and someone didn't like that there was smoke coming out of a smokestack, even though the person might have a, a air permit from the Hampshire DES, and even though most of the smoke coming out of the smokestack could be simply, you know, covered in dioxide on cold days and water vapor. So, the idea that, that an ordinance like this could confer, you know, just in this little municipality, standing that's different from, to sue, that's different from elsewhere in the state, would never be upheld. And I would add that I'm not aware that a single one of these ordinances has ever been held to be valid in the state of New Hampshire. I understand that some communities have acted to adopt them where the voters vote on them, but I'm not aware that any of these have been found to be enforceable for all the reasons that I've articulated here.
I don't know if there's a case we've heard of yet or an example where someone's come, where it's come to that point. I don't know if there's.
Right. Well, most instances, you know, most instances that I'm aware of, they haven't passed. But, but were they the passed? I mean, if it was a client of mine, the first thing I would tell the selectman is that you, you can't enforce this ordinance. And because it's unlawful. And I suppose theoretically, some, one of the petitioners or an aggrieved voter could file a declaratory judgment action and ask the court to, you know, declare whether or not the ordinance is enforceable, much has happened in the North Hampton case. But the, the lack of authority for these ordinances is so clear, given New Hampshire law, that I think it's pretty obvious why they've not gotten that far. They've not gotten that far because everyone knows they're not enforceable.
Would you be willing to expand a bit upon Seldef's case regarding the New Hampshire state constitution and what they believe is, would allow New Market and citizens of New Market to enforce this ordinance? They, they highlight several sections of the New Hampshire constitution that allow, that argues that local populations have the right to determine how they should be governed, regardless of what the New Hampshire general court may say, what broad sweeping court decisions may argue, that there is this fundamental right that citizens can come together and say, no, you can't do that because we live here and we get to make the choices about this, you know, environment.
Well, to the extent that, let's just address the choice of government. There is authority that allows municipalities within certain limits to have choice of government, and then the choices of government have then been outlined by the legislature. You can be a charter municipality, you can have different types of town meeting, you can be a city, you know, with a, with a city, either a city manager or, or a mayor. So there is authority to adopt different means of governing consistent with the constitution. But to, you know, the constitution is kind of like the Bible, you know? People can find language in it, and they can argue that that supports a particular point of view or a particular way of looking at the world. And, and yet, that's why we have court decisions. We have court decisions that interpret the constitution, interpret the state statutes. And I think the law is quite clear in New Hampshire that because we are a, not a home rule state, and that's interpreting the constitution as well as the statutes, municipalities only have the authority to do what the legislature has let them do. And, and I'd be the first to say that, you know, speaking as a lawyer for municipalities, I wish municipalities had more authority. I don't think that municipalities need to have to listen or get permission from Concord every time they want to do something. I mean, you know, and there are myriad examples of why it would make sense if municipalities did have more authority. But the fact is that in New Hampshire, that's not the way things are set up, and until the legislature sees fit to give municipalities more authority, we have the authority that they've given us and no more.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll comment that I looked into that, and that the reason, the one reason that's been given is that because we have so many representatives, that there's no need to have it local. You, you can go, you know, New Market has three representatives, state representatives.
Four.
Four, yes. Well, yes, technically, yes. So you had, so you're supposed to have enough access at the state level to, to.
I'll share with you one of my little pet peeves, which I think a lot of people, especially in this town, could understand. Why don't we need a two-thirds vote to pass a bond issue? In other words, we elect very well-informed representatives to our town council and to our school boards. I, I live in a municipality that eight years in a row had a majority of its voters support a bond to do work on the school, and it failed because it didn't get two-thirds. I mean, I mean, so that it seems to me to be a tremendous dysfunction, and I wish that the legislature would recognize that since the taxpayers are going to be impacted by these decisions are the ones making them, why do we need a supermajority? And, and there are a host of other examples that you can give where it would be nice if municipalities had more authority. But the fact is, is that Concord has not seen fit to give municipalities any more than the authority that we have, and so until that changes, we are limited by what they've given us.
Another real simple one, if I don't know if you remember from a year or two ago, the town was not allowed to enter into an agreement with the school to share services. The law said we're allowed to enter into other agreements with the municipalities or with the county, but it didn't say school. So I had to go to Concord, have them change the law to add the word "school" in there if, to make sure the IRA would allow the agreement. It's that simple that we can't do it unless it says it, even though it doesn't make sense.
I think historically, the most famous example would have been when the oil refinery was proposed for, for the seacoast in the 70s, 70s. And Durham found they didn't have home rule. They couldn't say no, and they had to go convince the state legislature to pass a law at the state level to prevent it. So that's kind of the situation that's being explained to us, right? They didn't have to do that.
Yes.
I had a question.
Please.
So, when I look at the, the arguments that we, you know, to, to Counselor Demont's point about something, you know, that's being argued that we are supposed to have these rights in the constitution, and aside from, you know, what you were saying about, you know, there's a lot of verbiage in there that might support both sides of any, any argument. One, when I did some research, if you could comment on this, we're being asked as a municipality that we would do that as the authority of the municipality, and I totally get that we don't have the authority, but that do individuals under the constitution and the Bill of Rights of New Hampshire have the ability to exercise some of these rights as individuals? Or are you able to comment on that?
Well, I mean, what they've asked you to do is to adopt an ordinance. And there are, you know, some of the ordinance seek to regulate, for instance, toxic substances, whatever, whatever that is, you know? There are, I mean, there's, there's, there's a theory in law that basically if a tort has happened and there doesn't appear to be a remedy, there should be a remedy. So for instance, if you were able to establish causality between a particular type of emission and a particular type of cancer, right? And say it was clear, every scientist would agree that this thing causes that and that emission is near, you know, where these people live, you, you might be able to, you know, achieve some of the objectives that are set forth in this ordinance by suing a manufacturer or an emitter of pollution where the causality was clearly established. So that could be an example of, of a person having a right that it appears to, that this ordinance is seeking to establish that's separate and apart from anything in the ordinance.
I think what I'm trying to get at is, I feel like there, I need clarity on whether there's a conflation between municipalities and the, the rights that municipalities should be protecting on behalf of individuals, and we're understanding we don't have the authority to do that. But do individuals?
Oh, can, can they stand in the, in the shoes of the municipality and then?
Or just as themselves? They have the, do they have, in other words, the things that are being cited in the constitution, the Bill of Rights, I think may be intended as rights of individuals.
Well, if that's their belief, then they don't need this ordinance. Because if they really believe they have those rights, then they don't need this ordinance to vindicate those rights.
They would just file a, a case?
That's my question.
Yeah, wow, yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't believe that the, there are a separate set of rights that are as broadly as they articulate what the objectives of this ordinance are that individuals have. And I think really, you know, the law of torts and, and things like that are much more narrowly, you know, constrained. You have to be able to show injury, damage, proximate cause, all those things. And, and again, I think one of the real problems created by this ordinance, even if the municipality had the authority that they, you know, say, say we became a home rule state tomorrow, alright? And if someone presented this ordinance, I would say, okay, you have the right to regulate some of these things now, but this ordinance is not drafted with the precision and clarity that it must be drafted with to put people on notice as to what is the conduct that is prescribed. And, you know, you think about, think about the state statutes and how they regulate, and the regulations, how they regulate air pollution, how they regulate water quality and, and things like that. I mean, they're, they're all science-based. They're all very specific. They have thresholds as to what is a permissible, you know, emission, what is an impermissible emission, and all of that is lacking in this ordinance, you know? So I, I, I think that even if the town had the authority, the objectives of the ordinance would have to be completely rewritten with, to include terms and thresholds and, you know, scientific guidance that would allow someone to understand what they can and can't do.
You've just made mention of, you know, the, the amount of work that would need to go into rewriting an RBO so it would be permissible under a home rule state.
Yes.
Is there any way that the document that we've been given? Is there any way that the document that we've been given that was presented to you a few months back could be tailored in such a way to work with the SEDF organization to accomplish their goals so that New Market could pass some sort of, I don't know how to describe it, some sort of language that would help and enforce and provide a way for stronger ecological rights, stronger recognition of New Market citizens who have concerns for environmental projects?
No, because absent home rule, you just can't enter the arena, you know? And so, and you have another issue, which is the issue of preemption. You know, the doctrine of preemption is, is that when a superior governmental body decides to legislate in an area, then that has the effect of overruling and taking away the ability of the inferior governmental body to regulate. The easiest example is Seabrook, all right? It's a nuclear plant. The nuclear regulatory authority in Washington regulates nuclear plants. There is no state authority to regulate nuclear plants. There is, I mean, the nuclear aspect of the plant, there's no municipal authority to regulate. And that's probably the best example I can give of preemption. But as you know, you know, the federal government regulates all types of environmental issues. In some areas, it allows the state to, you know, co-regulate. So that's instances like, for instance, in California, often they are in the vanguard of regulating all types of things, except for nuclear energy, because the federal government has allowed states to regulate, you know, emissions and things like that more strictly. And so there would be a way for the state of New Hampshire to regulate these things. But once the state or the federal government steps into the arena, we're out. And that's even if you had home rule, you know? So that's an entirely separate doctrine that explains why these are areas in which, you know, the municipality cannot get into because you have the state and federal government that regulate, has already regulated these areas.
Is there anything that the town council could pass that would allow the town of New Market to work alongside state agencies that would effectively force the state to recognize that the town has concerns outside of our town administrator sending a letter drafted by the town council saying, "We don't agree with X"?
No, again, it's the same issue. I mean, for instance, you can adopt your own septic regulations, and most municipalities have their own septic regulations. And oftentimes, the state stays out of septic regulations and only steps in if you're not regulating, you know? So that would be an example where municipalities have abundant control over an environmental issue, you know? How big the septic systems have to be, you know, do you have to have a replacement field, you know, all these types of things. And the state oftentimes only steps in if there's, if the municipality just, there's a lot of small towns around that don't regulate, you know? So that, there are opportunities. Municipalities can regulate wetlands more, you know, stringently than the state regulations. And obviously, you can adopt prime wetlands regulations, which is authorized by the state. So there are areas in which municipalities have historically regulated either alongside the state or more strictly than the state. But the only reason they get to do that is because the state has given authority for the municipality to do that.
Fair enough. Now, if I may continue. Is there anything that would prevent the town from either bringing suit or bringing to the attention of the state that they strongly disagree with, some type of action that the state is taking alongside of a company? Is there anything that would stop the town from going to a local court and filing a case against the state saying, "We know it's not maybe defined as, you know, we'll say air regulations as X part per million. We think that it should be more strict than that. There's no ordinance passed, there's nothing passed here, but could the town still file a suit with the state and say, 'Hey, you need to do something about this'?"
Well...
I know it's a hypothetical, but...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. I think the state could, I mean, the municipality could probably have standing to bring an action that, where there's a violation of state law, you know? And say, you know, because in enforcement actions under state and municipal law, you know, there's so many, only so many resources, you know? And courts have recognized that the decision to bring an enforcement action or not is a discretionary action by the government. So for instance, if the state was, had made a decision that this is not an area that we want to, you know, waste, not waste is not a good word, we want to expend our finite enforcement resources. I think if there's a clear violation of the state law and you have all the information you need to prove the violation, I think the municipality could have standing to bring an enforcement action for something like that. And, yeah, so that would be an example.
But if it's, but if it's just we don't agree with the policy that the state made, we'd have to have stand, we'd have to, there'd have to be a violation of law.
Right, right, has to be, right, you'd have to be a violation of law, not, not, I don't think that once the state has made the policy choice to adopt a particular set of regulations and stuff like that, and assuming that, I don't think that there'd be standing for the town to bring an action that would be successful, which is say, "We disagree."
Of course, but more than fair. And I've kind of just a few more final questions, if you don't mind. There are quite a few references in the document presented that would suggest maybe something along the lines of perhaps a bill of rights, if there's no better way to describe it, or a list of items that this group feels that they, as citizens of New Market, are entitled to or should be able to, you know, stand behind, such as our right to a healthy climate, our right to clean air, water, soil. Would it be improper for the town to adopt whether it is a proclamation or a resolution or an ordinance to a point that says that, you know, "We believe the residents of the town of New Market have the right to a natural environment, a right to non-polluted, you know, water sources, et cetera"?
I mean, I don't think you could call it an ordinance.
Yeah.
I think if you want to call it a political manifesto, I think that's fine. I mean, you know, town meetings back in the 70s, town in the late 60s, town meetings across New England and across the country, you know, adopted resolutions opposing the Vietnam War, you know? And that was an important sentiment that many people in the country felt at the time need to be expressed, and town meetings were the perfect vehicle to do that. But no one thought that any of those resolutions had the effect of law. They were expression of political sentiment. I think that, you know, if people want to adopt, you know, if you want to distill this into a number of, you know, you know, elements that reasonable people could all agree are important, but without calling it an ordinance, and if you decide to pass that at a town meeting, that would be a lawful thing to do. But it wouldn't be, have the force of law, it would just means that the residents of New Market are expressing their sentiment about what they seem to be, you know? I mean, for instance, I mean, you know, shall the voters adopt, you know, a resolution and communicate with their elected officials that global warming is, you know, a true scientific reality that is causing impacts upon, you know, myriad, you know, effects around the world, whether it's land, you know, oceans, all these things? And we ask our governmental officials to be attentive to this. That's a perfect thing for town meeting to adopt. And say the same thing here, I mean, to distill some of these things and to put it in a resolution that we would communicate with our higher elected officials that they attend to these, that would be a perfect subject matter.
It was pretty clear to me, though, when the presentations were made, that that's not what they're looking for. They acknowledged that, just everything that you just said, that it doesn't have any binding.
Right, 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 right.
So that's not what they're looking for.
Yeah, I think, I think an ordinance like this needs to go to Iowa, where they have, it's a home rule state. And even when it gets to Iowa, the local city attorney's going to look at that out there and say, "You need to amend this so it defines with more specificity what the objectives are that you're seeking to restrict people to or, you know, give them guidance on." And I think you could do that in Iowa, but you can't do it here in New Hampshire.
I have a question to that point.
Even Maine's a home state.
Oh, okay.
You go to Maine.
Go to Maine. We can give directions.
So I wanted to ask, you mentioned that your firm, you've worked with Peterborough and Plymouth, and I know Plymouth passed one, right?
Yeah, I don't know if they passed it. I know that I gave them the same advice that I gave them here, you know?
Okay, I guess I got to go talk to Plymouth.
The voters didn't pass it.
Yeah.
They did pass it down. And I want to make clarification, too. We do not have town meeting in which the people can, only the council can introduce legislation.
But even so, I guess I'm interested in the different types of thinking that goes on into it. That one town will say, "Yes, let's do this," another town will say, "No."
Well, I think because it's town meeting, so it's just a different format.
For example, a couple of years ago, they had a, every community was, I think it was about campaign finance reform. There's an organization went out and had all these petitions, and they went on to every ballot. The municipality can't regulate campaign finances. It passed because it's, everybody wanted it, but it's just a statement that the communities want. There's nothing more that can be done after that vote. The perfect example would be the Plymouth ordinance. It can pass, but we can't enforce it, and they couldn't, they can't enforce it.
Yeah, we'll tell you, there's no enforcement of that ordinance in Plymouth, and, you know, I don't think it creates any standing or any rights in third parties to enforce it.
Is the specificity better?
Oh, for all kinds of reasons. I mean, first of all, you'd start with, it's, there's no home rule. And so this is beyond the authority of town meeting or the town council or the city council to adopt. So yes, you can pass it, but it can't be given any legal import because municipalities don't have that power.
I don't know if you remember a few years ago, the city of Portsmouth was trying to ban plastic bags.
Yeah.
Can't do it. Why? Because there's no law allowing the city of Portsmouth to ban plastic bags. And so we don't have that authority. On the flip side, we're Maine, where it is a home rule state. If you go to Freeport and you buy something, you have to pay extra money for a bag because they have the right to charge that. I think it's like a nickel if you have a plastic bag.
The town administrator, can you enliven those of us who may not be entirely knowledgeable what the state's current process is for proposing, accepting, and eventually initiating large, we'll say, environmentally impactful projects regardless of positive or negative effects? But let's say a company wants to move in and start doing something in a town, we clearly don't have the right to say no to that. How does the state work with the local communities and with that company to ensure that everybody's concerns are heard and that things are followed lawfully, whether or not we agree with what the law says?
I mean, I think it depends on what the actual business would be. I mean, if you've got, for example, the USA Spring situation Nottingham, they have public hearings, they go to, I think it was the PUC, they'd have to go in front of for that one, to, but that has nothing to do with the municipality. We would have rights in the zoning to say where they can put it, but we can't regulate what they can, what they can do. We can say, "Look, you know, we don't want that in a residential area, we want it in an industrial area."
That's, that's a good point, though. Is there something that this subcommittee, that this town council could do in terms of zoning to say, you know, something in line with SEDF's wishes that we don't think certain things should be, or should be, fall within our zoning rights, I guess? I don't know the proper way of describing it.
I think that SEDF's issues need to be addressed by the legislature, not the municipality.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's where they're going to get most bang for the buck.
Yeah, I mean, toxicity, you know, talking about air or water, or wastes that are created on site, you know, like nuclear or mercury that need to be taken off-site because it's not safe to store them there. And those are regulated by the state. So for instance, if a large manufacturer came to town and their manufacturing processes required, you know, wastewater, you know, industrial wastewater treatment, and if they required air emissions, you'd need to get a permit from the Air Resources Board, and you'd get, you may need to get, in addition to a town permit, also a permit for water emissions, especially if you're dumping water into the waters of the state. So there are, and if you go into the regulations for those that are in the DES rules, I mean, you know, hundreds of pages with great specificity as to all the types of emissions components and what's regulated and what thresholds are, you know, and how you have to treat them so that you don't go over the thresholds and all that kind of stuff. So there are processes. We're a long way from the old days when it was just a pipe near the river that got rid of waste, and anything that could go up, the smokestack did. I mean, that's not where we're at as a nation, and certainly not where we're at in the state of New Hampshire.
And I think to go back to what John said earlier, senses of DES rule, it's preemptive. We can adopt one because DES has. So, because the state trumps the local government.
Think of Newington, right? All those big businesses, you know, on the east side of Route 16, right? I mean, you've got three power plants over there, you've got Sprague Energy, you have, you know, the C3 Natural Gas Plant, there's all kinds of things over there. All those manufacturing and, you know, generating places, they're all regulated by the state. And Newington regulates them in terms of building permits and zoning and, you know, site plan review, but that's it. All the, all the stuff that really makes those plants go are the permits that the state gives them to deal with emissions and wastewater, stuff like that.
Thank you. Questions, concerns?
No, I'm all set.
Councilor Capes?
I'm all set.
Alrighty. I think that does it for me as well. I thank you both for coming out tonight. I also like to thank you for dealing with my volley of questions.
No, 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 listen, this is great stuff because, you know, not only is this good back and forth, but for the benefit of people here in the audience and also the people here on the TV, I mean, it's informative. And this is the way government should work.
Before you go, one final question. What would you recommend to the folks who are proposing this RBO as to where to, how to resolve the specificity issues and their appeal to the local boards? Would it be appealing directly to the state and working with lobbying firms to get the state to change?
Yeah, I think, I mean, think about Northern Pass, right? I mean, that was a result that I think shocked a lot of people in this state. And yet, if you, community organize, if you, you know, lobby your representatives in Concord, you can achieve results that, you know, the founders of this state, you know, would say, "That's a good result." And so I think it's about community organizing, it's about trying to get people, you know, together, to agree on sets of objectives and goals. And the clearer the objective, I mean, that was a really easy target in the sense that, you know, it was unknown, it affected everyone the same, it was something that people could rally around. But just like with the oil refinery over in Durham, I mean, it was unknown, it was, people could rally around it. And so I think it's about community organizing and focusing. Figure out, you know, pick off things that you can, don't bite off more than you can chew, and pick off things that are, you know, that people feel strongly about. And I think incrementally, they could probably achieve a lot of their objectives.
But, yeah, but the place, the right place is Concord.
Right, it's, yeah.
It's Concord, it's not New Market situation.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we officially, did you have something to say? Thank you. Before we officially wrap the public hearing portion, I would ask if there's any member of the public who is here tonight to speak against the RBO, who is not here with the town administrator or with the town's legal representatives, if they'd like to come forward. I'll take that as a no, and we will close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Thank you both for coming.
Good night.
How would you both like to proceed from here?
I think we probably need to set a date to discuss and follow up.
I would request that we give ourselves at least a couple of weeks to be able to digest all of the information that has been submitted to us thus far, to put together some remarks and as we come to... to put together some remarks as we come together for our next meeting. I know that that puts us kind of close to the Thanksgiving holiday and I don't really want to run this out any longer than we should have to with respect to the two parties. Thoughts on a time, rather, you know, a date?
We have council on the 7th. If we're looking at Wednesdays.
Yep.
So 14th an option?
For me, it is.
Yeah, I have a conference, but then I'll be back.
Okay.
At 7:00.
That works for me. Alrighty. In terms of the 14th, there was a question prior to the meeting as to whether or not we'd be making our determination in a non-public session and then bringing it forward, or if we would, you know, do that out in the public. I personally think that we should, it should obviously be open to the public and more than happy to...
It doesn't qualify under non-public.
I didn't think it did. The specific term was executive session, which...
We can have a session where there's no public comment.
Yeah.
That's entirely within our rights to do, but the meeting itself needs to be a public meeting.
That's, that was my understanding. Thank you. Alrighty. Yeah. Until then, we will adjourn and we will reconvene.
I think there was one other request to either read a letter or enter it into...
Are you referring to Monica's seven pages?
Yes.
I did mention that at the beginning.
Okay.
I can do it again if you'd like me to.
I thought that was a different letter. Sorry. Got it?
Was there, oh, sorry, you had one. Please, go for it.
Oh.
I, I know that you had mentioned it and for whatever reason I was conflating it with this one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we go then, I will read into the public record a letter addressed to the Town of Newmarket Water Rights Subcommittee from SEDF, written by Michelle Sanborn. This will be made available in the packet of documents that gets submitted to the town council along with our final recommendation. Seeing no other business, we will reconvene on November 14th at 7:00 PM in these chambers, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
I am willing to take information kind of right up to the last minute so long it is, it is clear, concise, and not...
You mean written public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, I would think so.
Hold it, but if it's items that would build off of what we heard tonight or things that you may have left out during your initial discussion, we'd be more than happy to accept them.